Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call the special meeting of the Governing Board regarding the transformation of the Maricopa County Community College District to order. Ms. McGrath, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The words "under God" were added to the pledge about 20, 30 years ago, and there is no comma. It is one fluid sentence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. McGrath. My name is Alfredo Gutierrez. I am the President of the Governing Board. This is the first of two public hearings and then a final meeting for adoption or rejection of a proposed resolution by the Board regarding the transformation of the country's largest, most diverse, most competitive, and perhaps certainly the most excellent district in the United States. And we are here to hear public comment on that transformation. The resolution, as is before you, describes powers and duties that the Chancellor currently has, that the Chancellor will exercise if a transformation takes place. But let me reiterate that those powers and duties are currently in the authority of the Chancellor. The question, then, is why are we doing this if we are not adding specific authority? It is because we are contemplating, we are contemplating a reorganization of the district unlike that which has happened in the past. Those powers and duties have been exercised within an existing structure that has done us well, done this community well, for 50 years. But we are now contemplating major changes on that organization. There is an obvious question that sentence begs, and I think most of you sitting in this room understand the reason, but let me state the obvious. The first is this: In these times, in these tough economic times, the district has been cut dramatically in its state funding. It is since 2009, we have lost over $400 million in state funding. This year, the legislature went one step further and removed community colleges, the major urban community colleges, as a responsibility of the state of Arizona. As a consequence, as a consequence, we need to assess where we are and begin a process of survival, begin a process of excellence. The district has survived for 50 years and provided excellence for 50 years. It will be here in 50 years. It will provide excellent service in 50 years. But it can't do it by standing still. It will do it by evolving. And the proposals that you will hear today are part of that process of evolving and meeting the demands that are placed upon us, not only by those cuts, but by the changing nature of the economy. The changing nature of the economy has put demands on this district in terms of time, in terms of our ability to respond, unlike that which existed even 10 or 15 years ago. And the demands will become even more pressing as technology changes. Just think about the quantum computing and the extraordinary changes that will bring about, and that's within 10, perhaps 15 years. So the district has to begin to proceed to change. That's the reason for the public hearing. If we are contemplating changes in the district far from the incremental steps that have been taken in the past, then it is only appropriate and only right that the public take part in those decisions, that we listen to you as we proceed forward. And that's why the public hearings, that's why we took the extraordinary step of leaving our cocoon in Tempe where we hide, very successfully, by the way. Usually, there's only three or four members of the public there. And so I want to tell you that now that you are all here, we are appropriately terrified. Nonetheless, we're going to do it again next Monday in Mesa, if you want to join us one more time. So the process of the resolution that you have is, that is a draft form. We are going to hear from you, we're going to hear from the Chancellor, of course. We're going to hear from each other because we will proceed to discuss the resolution as well amongst each other. And on our third meeting, which will be at our cocoon, is the day that we will either accept the resolution as drafted or make major modifications. Amendments to the resolution have already been proposed, and they will, I'm sure, be proposed in the process that we are going through. Those decisions will be made in that third meeting, and I invite you to be there at that third meeting. That will be in the Tempe District Office. The next item on the agenda, I'm looking at the Board to see if anyone's, if not, the next item on the agenda is the Chancellor's remarks. Chancellor, of course. Chancellor, Dr. Maria Harper-Merin.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Ms. Gutierrez and members of the Board. And thank you to all of you for being here tonight. It is exciting to see that you care enough about the system and the communities that we serve to come on a Monday night when it's cold outside. We hope it's not raining right by the time we get out, but we do appreciate the support. So what I would like to do, Mr. Gutierrez and members of the Board, is provide information about my vision for transformation for the system, because some of you have heard me, some of you have not heard me, and you may be questioning what that is and what that looks like. So I would like to use my time at the podium to share with you some of that vision and perhaps generate some of the questions that should be asked. I want to thank the Board for the opportunity and for being willing to make a public statement of support through a resolution, which is typically what the Board has done in the past. So to provide a reminder to all of us of who we are, what we do, and to celebrate the good things that we have done for the many years that the system has been in place, we have put together a video, and if someone can play the video, that would be great. And then I'll continue.
We live in an exciting time. Our region has seen explosive growth over the past 50 years. New industries and businesses are creating incredible opportunities. Technology is developing at lightning speed. Increasingly, higher education has become necessary to compete for high-quality jobs and is an essential component to our state's economic success. Meanwhile, Maricopa Community Colleges has been and will remain a key partner in Arizona's educational landscape. Our role in this story began in 1920 when Phoenix Junior College opened, serving 60 students in a six-mile radius. As population boomed, we added colleges, each with a goal of serving residents in its immediate geographic area. Today, Maricopa Community College District is the largest educational institution in the state and one of the largest community college systems in the country, educating more than 200,000 students annually at 10 colleges and multiple service locations throughout the valley. In addition, Maricopa Community Colleges is the state's largest provider of workforce training. We are a key transfer partner to not only our three state universities, but to institutions of higher education across the country. Maricopa Community Colleges is also a vital player in the Governor's Achieve 60 Initiative, which seeks to make Arizona more competitive through the power of education. This is our unique challenge, our incredible privilege, and our serious responsibility. While we once relied on a combination of state aid, tuition, and property taxes to fund student services, state aid to Maricopa Community Colleges has been eliminated. Population growth in our region has slowed. Advances in transportation and technology have changed how students access education and training. More and more students are enrolling at multiple colleges during the same semester, reflecting greater mobility throughout the valley and an increased interest in online classes. What has not changed, however, is our commitment to serve our community through quality education, services, and innovation with every new step. Continued student success demands it. So to make our district even stronger, we pledge to take many steps toward positive transformation within the weeks and months to come. We will emphasize the role of technology in the educational process, including real-world training, online coursework, and collaboration with industry. We will continue to meet the challenges of financing higher education in response to changes in state funding, taxes, and tuition. We will prepare students for even greater career success. We will make workforce training programs more agile for students and employers. We will foster an entrepreneurial spirit in our students, employees, and community. We will strengthen the ties between our district and the communities we serve. We will reach out to local business, industry, and government leaders who reflect our 21st century environment. We will maintain our commitment to provide quality and personal interactions between students and instructors. Together, we can ensure that the Maricopa Community Colleges and the valley we serve are poised to thrive today and well into the future. We look forward to the journey.
Thank you for allowing us to show that. So many, many things have changed in the county since the system was created in 1962, where we had almost like islands of populations with a lot of empty land between one and the next. Now we have a large county where some of those who live here know when you go from one city to the next, but many people who come visit, they don't know that, oh, that was 64th Street, that's not Phoenix anymore, that's now Scottsdale. So many things have changed, and while our district, it is still one of the best systems in the nation, not only one of the largest, is the structure of the system and many of the policies actually date to the beginnings of the Maricopa District. So when I speak about a reorganization, it is with the goal of transforming our system to be more responsive to the needs of the community of today. So let me share some of the thoughts with you. We are talking about a reorganization of the upper levels of administration, specifically leadership roles, to create a regional approach to how we serve the community. So I'll get to the specifics in a minute. We just adopted a new strategic plan, and that plan has what we call the strategic commitments of the district. So the goal of the transformation effort is to actually help us meet those commitments, and let me tell you what they are. One is build a thriving community through access and student success. Number two, be a driving force for economic and workforce development in Arizona. And three, attain recognition as a leading innovator among institutions of higher education. So we know the system has been strong and has been successful. For example, we know that six of our 10 colleges have been named more than once as Aspen Prize finalists. We know the system has an excellent reputation for how we handle our finances, and yet again, we received AAA bond rating from the three main houses. And I think everybody knows, and we said it in the video, that we are the primary provider of workforce development for the state of Arizona. As we know, many of the nurses, the first responders, and a lot of the technicians in the valley, the whole state of Arizona actually have Maricopa credit. More than 60% of the students at Arizona State University actually have come from one of the Maricopa Colleges. So the impact that we have in our community is great, and we hope we continue to do that. So we believe that we need to approach the changes in a systemic manner as opposed to a localized area as we have done before, because we, the service areas cannot be defined anymore as the traditional six-mile radius. That's how the colleges were created, they were supposed to serve the six-mile radius, and now we have concentric, actually, circles. And we have, before I got here tonight, I was meeting with the students who are part of our SPOT 127 project, and it's housed by Rio Salado, and I was asking the President, how many empowerment centers do we have around the county? And he said about 11, and that's real. So we know that what we do is great, but we also know that the six-mile radius is not really how we serve the community today. We also know that there is, has been significant development of transportation in the valley from the days when I moved here in '82. We had, I had two freeways I could use, I-10, I-17, and neither one of those took me to ASU, where I was a student. Due to the population growth and the sprawl, we also know that community outreach and relationship today for the colleges span multiple municipalities. We also have regional economic development organizations that cross multiple college service areas in the traditional definition of that. We know that we have new ways to deliver the services to the students. As we heard on the video, we have students, thousands of students, who actually attend more than one college at the same time, because some of the colleges are more convenient in the morning, close to the house, or at the end, close to work. So what are some of the outcomes that we hope to accomplish from a regional approach? One is a comprehensive and seamless community outreach at a regional level. Community development, greater alignment with the delivery of occupational programs, regional approach to new program development, so that we don't have to duplicate effort at all the colleges if we approach the delivery of the services in a regional manner. We know that, let me get to the next page. So what is, when I talk about regions, what does that look like? We are looking at a distribution that matches the geography in the county, so that there will be an east region. We have two colleges serving currently the east valley, Mesa Community College and Channel Gilbert Community College. We would have a north region, that would be Paradise Valley and Scottsdale; west side, Glendale and Estrella Mountain; and then a central region, which would be Phoenix College and South Mountain. So that is eight of the 10 colleges. Gateway Community College has been the center of innovation. We have the incubator, small business development is housed at the college, most of the allied health programs, so the college would just develop more of the occupational offerings. And then Rio Salado, I think everyone knows, is our distance learning, primarily online learning college. But many of you may not know that when Rio Salado was created, it had two primary functions. One was distance learning, and the other one was serving the business community. So we've taken the Maricopa Corporate College, that had a separate structure with the president and vice presidents and other functions, and we have merged already the MCOR with Rio Salado to basically restore the original mission of the college, to provide training to the business community. So by doing so, we have eliminated the president-level position and three vice presidents, and the savings, obviously, would be invested back into the system. So we would go from 11 presidents that we had last year to probably about six, and then it may impact other levels of the organization. The savings, just by restructuring the upper level, the presidents, probably will generate close to about a million dollars that we can then reinvest in teaching and learning, basically serving the students in a better way and improving the support services that we do. We hope to begin implementation with the support endorsement of the Board in 2017 in a phased-in approach, where we probably can start with one or two regions and then build forward in that manner. So what we're hoping at the end is that we're more responsive to the needs of the community, that we strengthen the ways in which we serve our students and our students to come, that we strengthen K-12 partnerships in a regional manner, and that we deliver to the community the promises that we have made to provide access to opportunity and student success for all of the diverse communities that we serve. So with that, Mr. Gutierrez and members of the Board, is an overview of what I referred to when I talk about transformation. Thank you.
Thank you, Chancellor. Members of the Board, questions, comments?
Well, thanks, first of all, for all of you to be here. And for those of you standing in the back, there are seats in the A row, B row, and C row. So those of you sitting behind those three rows, you know the situation. So feel free to come up here and sit down if you'd like. To talk about the role of the Governing Board, first of all, we are a link between you, the community, and the district itself. We just finished the campaign season where we had an opportunity to speak with hundreds of constituents, both in a regional basis and county-wide, and we learned a great deal about the importance of this institution to the members of this community. We provide an excellent investment. On behalf of the taxpayers, we return over $4 for every dollar invested, and that is well documented, has been for a number of years. Our key and important element that we're talking about tonight is to maintain that huge response to our investment. Our role as the Governing Board is to set the direction of the Board, where we want the Board to go. It is the Chancellor and the staff that she administers to actually make that happen. And that has been our situation since we started this governance model back in the '90s. So we're here to listen tonight. Anybody that knows me know I could spend the night talking, but I really want to hear what you have to say in terms of where this district needs to be today, and just as importantly, where it needs to be years from now. Because long after we're all gone, we hope this district is still serving the members of this community and making sure that Arizona's economy is healthy because of the efforts that this district makes. So thank you.
Any other questions or comments? If not, ladies and gentlemen, the fun part, we have, let me, before I begin, we have a rather limited number of requests to speak. If you wish to speak, or during the course of the evening you wish to speak, please fill one of these out so that we have your name and we'll call upon you. Let me read sort of a required statement on citizen's interim. This is given to us by the Attorney General, given to all districts by the Attorney General on citizen's interim. So, "Citizen's interim. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the Governing Board. In compliance with the open meeting law, the Governing Board will neither discuss nor take action on issues raised during this portion of the agenda. When necessary, issues will be taken under advisement and placed on a subsequent agenda." In this case, we know that that is precisely what will happen. "Presenting concerns to the Board and the free expression of ideas should be communicated with decorum and respect. Uncivil or disorderly conduct is not permitted. The use of derisive or insulting language, or the direction of remarks that defame, attack, or harass an individual may serve as a cause for the Board's president to direct that person to immediately conclude his or her responses." With that, the first person we'll call upon is Mr. Robert Sosa. Mr. Sosa is representing the Maricopa County Community College Faculty Association, and the agenda is a Board resolution. Mr. Sosa.
The clock. President Gutierrez, members of the Board, Chancellor, CEC, and members of the community. Good evening. I am Robert Sosa, and I'm here on behalf of the Maricopa County Community Colleges Faculty Executive Council. I have been asked by our district's faculty leadership to express our support for the Board's and Chancellor's vision of a more effective district. We are eager to participate in the evolution of this district, to share our collective expertise, and to help inform the forthcoming transformation. We also acknowledge that transformation introduces uncertainty, and as faculty, we are prepared and willing to embrace the uncertainty in the pursuit of greater student access and success. We welcome the change that will ensure that the district and its colleges are better able to serve our students and that we become ever more responsive to our community's needs. As the system evolves, we offer our continued partnership and understand that this transformation will require that faculty evolve as well. We look forward to those opportunities to improve our role on the front line of the district's educational mission. The Faculty Executive Council, as well as the 10 college senates, are all committed to remaining strong, active partners throughout this time of change. With faculty at the table, working with the Chancellor, CEC, the Board, and our community partners, we are confident that the coming transformation will result in positive change, positioning the district to be the colleges of choice for our community's workforce and general education needs. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Dr. John Storsley, I hope I pronounced correctly, Doctor, from Paradise Valley Community College Faculty.
Yeah, on behalf of the Paradise Valley Faculty Association, or Faculty Senate, I should say, we are very excited for all the changes. And some of the changes we've already seen is the fact that we're getting a new enrollment management system, which the old one, I couldn't even enroll, and I'm IT faculty, so it was really kind of embarrassing. I'm also pleased to see that we're getting a customer relationship management system. Now, our faculty, like Robert's... Okay. I usually don't like these things, so I apologize. We're very excited and a little bit nervous, too. Like Robert said, we're a little nervous because we don't understand all the changes and how they're going to impact our culture. But we're also very excited because of the changes I mentioned earlier. What we're afraid of is that you're going to throw out the baby with the bathwater. As Mr. Gutierrez had eloquently stated, we're a very good system. We are ranked very high, and I have to disagree with Dr. our Chancellor, because I found that we were eight out of 10 of our schools are in the top one. So just a slight disagreement, we're a little bit better than that. Also, the fact that we are, you know, military loves us, and so do our students. And part of the reason that we have to, or our students have to, go to different schools is because we don't all have the ability to bring in students. Well, with new marketing, we could be able to get that. We at Paradise Valley, we like to say we're the best own-owned project there is, because a lot of people don't know. Even people that are within a couple miles of our school don't realize all the cool things that we're offering. And, you know, we're a little nervous, too, because of the budget. Just like you said, it's going to be tough times. Well, you know, technology's not cheap, so we're a little concerned that we won't be able to update all our systems either. And, you know, we went from changing our technology every five years to now it's going to be every seven years. Well, you know the world, it's changing so drastically, seven years is, you know, a lifetime in the world of IT. But I just wanted to say that we're looking forward to change, we're a little nervous about it, but we will support our Chancellor, and we look forward to working with her. So thank you very much, Board members.
Thank you, Dr. Storsley. Dr. Jim Reed. Dr. Jim Reed.
Thank you, and welcome to Glendale. I came here over 30 years ago. I'm kind of a historian now, along with a friend of mine here. I will divide my talk into three decades, one minute for each decade. I want to begin by saying, if I were to entitle what I would say, it's Tone at the Top. I had a chancellor once that said, "The persons at the top sent the tone." I came here from a university in California, Cal Poly, in San Luis Obispo, as a tenured associate professor. I met a person named Jeanne Abel in Los Angeles, and she said, "Hey, you ought to come over and try this." It has been a delight. I spent time with your wherethes and your wheretwas, and would like to comment on a little bit of that. When I came here, there was a chancellor named Paul Elsner. Dr. Elsner was phenomenal, visionary. He would go away and come back with encyclicals that none of us understood. But we knew he had a vision. He was excited, and that tone went through the whole district. We responded. A fellow named Ron Bleed got in touch with me and said, "Hey, would you like to write this impact study up for Glendale? We've got a high-tech building we're going to build." I worked with four deans. They were phenomenal guys. Larry went off to Mesa. Phil went off to Gateway. Homero went off to Estrella. Stan went off to a center where they service cars and whatnot. I will tell you that we were pumping out a lot of people, everybody from auto noise technicians to nurses, you name it. It was exciting. The interesting thing is I could not have named a board member. Board did not come out and do this. I thank you for the tone that you set by doing this. However, the next decade, next minute, started with a young Hispanic female coming as president to our college. After that happened, there were some disagreements, and a board member came out to our college and asked for her resignation. That is when I got into politics. I, since that time, have served a number of two-year terms as president of our senate, and I'm not speaking for any of my... That always happens, all right.
Proceed, that's right.
Okay.
Proceed with your statement.
I'll get through this decade quickly.
You've only got one more decade to go.
I will have to tell you that it was interesting when he came out. I said, "I am going to get in politics because it looks like it's become an us-them situation," something that I would like to tell you we cannot tolerate if we go forward with this plan. The next decade was productive, and I'm in that right now, I guess. We put together all kinds of programs. We have an NAU program at our school for the bachelor's degree that graduates more people from our program than NAU does. There are so many things that are happening. Now, I'm a Republican, which is really a surprise to some people, because I love transformation. But my transformation is simply one of conserving the best of the past. Unfortunately, I received something from the Republican folks prior to voting, and it told me who to vote for, for board. This is a nonpartisan group. I would hope it could stay that way. When you came here, I hope you didn't come with any agendas, hidden or open. Sometimes that has not been the case. I would hope we could proceed with that being a change. So, I will simply tell you that my initial board had no party affiliation. I don't think it did. You have one. I would hope we could put those things behind us. I would like to support Maria Harper-Mernick. She is phenomenal. I would hope the board would be behind her, because you set the tone at the top. We trust her as faculty. We will follow her anywhere, even if it's transforming and frightening. We're behind her. But we have to be a group that functions together, not divisively. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Reed. I have two more speakers. If you wish to speak, please fill out a form. Otherwise, at the end of these two speakers, you'll have to hear from us. Mr. Chuck Emma. Mr. M is a firefighting paramedic. Mr. M. M, the letter M. Montgomery. Mr. Montgomery.
Good evening. I have a couple of topics to speak of this evening. And first and foremost is the importance and the appreciation that the Valley Fire Services have for the Community College District, all of them, and the contribution that they make to our industry. It's irreplaceable. It's vital, not only to fire and fire and paramedic, but also to the police agencies. There's no other way to replicate what you provide to us as far as the training and the skill and the competencies and certifications. I think that I would express what every fire chief in the Valley would say, is we want to continue this important relationship, want to do what we can to make it more effective and more lucrative for you, and also pertinent to the changing times that we're in. So, on that, I just want to say, it sounds like the proposal centers on the concept. I was just drawing a little map on the back of my paper that has us divided up primarily somewhat at Central Avenue and Camelback. And I would say if you thought about Central Avenue and Camelback and then worked from all areas east and west of that, then your distribution sounds correct to me, because it puts the right number of colleges in the right geographical areas. I would encourage you to consider the naming of those, and it sounds like that some of that naming has been discussed. But I think that when you talk about North District, there's colleges in the West that are going to be geographically further north than the ones stated. Happy Valley versus Paradise Valley, College at Union Hills, and Scottsdale further south than that. So I guess what I'm saying is, for geographical simplification and for any appearance that might sound more important than the other, that you just go with four geographical areas, North, South, East, and West. Keep it simple. Keep it simple for the residents. Keep it simple for the cities that they serve, and not have any sense that one is more important than the other. And if, I think if you use those geographical descriptions and stay away from terms like primary and central and things like that, it might be helpful to you in the long run and hopeful, helpful to your success.
Thank you, Mr. Montgomery. Ms. Rachel Smith.
Good evening, President Gutierrez, board members, chancellor, and fellow community members. My name is Rachel Smith, and I have been a West Valley resident for 15 years, and I'm a faculty member and faculty senate president at Estrella Mountain Community College. As I read your resolution, I am greatly encouraged by your focus on student success and community development. Although I can't officially speak for everyone at EMCC, I can tell you that, just like me, my colleagues are fundamentally dedicated to these same goals, and that we will welcome and enthusiastically support, develop, and pursue opportunities that will help our students succeed in college and in their lives. In these goals, I am with you 100%. Estrella is a successful college with its own unique character. We have been recognized by the Aspen Institute for multiple years. We are finalists for a Bellwether Award. We have received millions of dollars in grant funding for high-tech workforce development programs for which we partner with our local industries like Palo Verde Nuclear Generating Station and Southwest Gas. However, guiding our college and our sister colleges to become even more efficient and even more responsive and even more student-centered is undoubtedly of paramount importance, and I'm glad that you and the district leadership are tackling this issue. I'm also encouraged that you resolve to utilize data, benchmarks, and specific measurable outcomes to guide your decision-making. The employees of the district represent the most valuable resource and an incredible brain trust that is available to you. As you guide the development of our college system, please be mindful of these people. Please reach out, engage, and listen. We have processes for shared governance within our district that serve all employees, from the chancellor on down, and provide students with fair, predictable, structured interactions with their college. These shared and negotiated processes create a level of trust that runs throughout our workplace and throughout our interactions with each other, our supervisors, our students, and our communities. And the result of this trust is that we, as employees, are empowered to do our best work and that our students and communities are served to our utmost abilities. As you shepherd this period of transformation, I ask that you are mindful of the importance of shared governance and trust, and make, of importance of shared governance and trust, and make decisions that allow us to continue at our utmost abilities and to continuously improve our work, which we are always, which we are all always seeking to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. That completes the request of speakers that I have before me. If there are anyone else who wishes to speak. If not, ladies and gentlemen, I will close the citizens interim portion of this board meeting, and proceed to ask the board if it has comments, questions, and/or discussion. Just let me, let me add mine. Perhaps their closing comments, if I don't encourage anyone else to speak in the board. The reason for doing this, I think, is outlined by, was outlined by the chancellor exceedingly well. Ultimately, it is student success. This is the only reason to do this. The reason is to reallocate resources, to streamline. And we do all those things to be able to better meet the obvious coming challenges. And I've thoroughly mentioned one of those, the incredible cost of technology today and the increasing cost of that technology in the future. The district simply has to have, if it is going to maintain its position as the state's greatest provider, major provider of workforce development, it simply has to invest in that technology, because in fact, that's what the marketplace will demand of us. If we are going to continue to be the greatest source of academic success, and keep this in mind, over 60% of the juniors and seniors at Arizona State University have 12 or more credit hours from our community colleges. So if the governor wants to achieve 60, if the business community wants to change the economic climate of this, of this state by, by increasing the number of bachelors, increasing the number of master's degrees, we are the road. We are the bridge to being able to accomplish that. It may seem ironic that while one talks about achieving 60, one cuts the funding. But such are the ironies of the 21st century. We will have to deal with them. But let me say again, we, we made a decision, made a decision, and it was, it was a difficult decision. It was one that, that in its initial phase did not have unanimity. But ultimately, I think we have all come to an agreement, I don't want to speak for anyone else, that we made absolutely the right decision. We've chosen a chancellor who has the trust of the faculty, the trust of the administration, the trust of the board, the trust of the business community, and ultimately, and more importantly, a vision on how to maintain and keep this college system going forward in all of the challenges that it faces. Just let me say it, and I have great respect for a former chancellor, and as many of you know, they consider him a great fan. But sometimes the right person comes in at the right moment, the right thing occurs just at that very second that you need it, and I think that, that we have made that decision and found that person our chancellor. So we're going to go forward with great optimism, great expectations, great hope. And frankly, change is difficult. I don't think I have to tell any of you that, especially those of you who look as old as I am. Change is difficult, and sometimes it provides great opportunities, and sometimes it just snarls you. But change is coming. Whether we want to or not, the economy is changing at breakneck speed. Whether we want it or not, the reality of what is happening to our funding has occurred, whether we like it or not. And so change is coming. So the question before this board is, do we follow the chancellor into a future where we have, I think, certainty? Yes, there's questions. You don't move anything this large. This is a billion-dollar system, is arguably the largest system in the United States. You don't transform it after 50 years, those six-mile concentric circles that the chancellor spoke about, without some displacement. And it will occur, and we should all be ready for it. But we should also be ready to understand that change is opportunity. It's an opportunity for even greater excellence than that, which we have proven to the world we can achieve. Further discussion. Mr. Sar.
A couple things. I can't give up. One, I'm really hopeful that you're here tonight, but I want to get more out of you before you leave. We've only been here for 45 minutes. Our board member meetings last for hours. So when we're done, we're going to stick around. I will. I took me, I had to go through three zip codes to get here from the East Valley, so I want to spend more time here and talk to you. So I hope that you'll stick around as well and give us some more of your thoughts. I want to reiterate what our president said, what our chair has said. We have an administration that's fully capable of doing whatever needs to be done to make this the best institution of higher education in the Valley. We have competition. You know, ASU has competition. In the private sector, we have a huge growing private institution in Grand Canyon. We have to maintain our excellence, and it doesn't happen by doing the same old thing. I remember all the consternation that happened when we went from 602 area code to 480, 602, and 620. The world was going to come to an end. I remember the year 2000, when all the computers in the world were going to fry, and we were going to be left without them. So we survived those kind of drastic changes. This is a change. It's not a change that's going to look so much different than we won't, that we won't recognize anymore, but it is going to look effectively, this, the need, it's going to fill the needs of the 21st century, and we are well into that now. We need to make sure that we are taking care of those kids that are born today, get the same benefits from this institution that those that are sitting in here that have gone through it have as well. So I hope you'll stick around. I'm going to be here till as long as the last person leaves, because traffic sucks going home, so. Thank you again for being here.
Ms. Eva.
When I first heard about the idea, I was very concerned, because I pictured a president having to drive back and forth between two different colleges. And as a former teacher who taught at two different schools, three different schools at one time, it wasn't very convenient. And, but it was explained to me in a way that made perfect sense. The regional president... The regional president would have specific duties, would oversee the colleges, but there would be someone at each college to take care of everything that happened during the day, the regular routine. And in that way, the regional president would have the freedom to deal with the community, business leaders, fundraising, and all those other sorts of reaching-out duties that are really hard for presidents to do presently. Any one of our presidents not only oversees the college, but is responsible for fundraising, is responsible for meeting with the community leaders, is responsible for talking to the business leaders to see how they connect. It's a lot, and I think that this would be a more efficient system, and so that's why, that's a big reason why I support it.
Let me follow up in Mr. Sar's comments. Remember that we're elected officials. We are, you know, on the website, all our numbers. You need to talk to us. You need to contact us if there are concerns as we go forward. This isn't the only opportunity. I think all of us are readily available to every one of you. If there's no further discussion, this public hearing stands adjourned. Hold on. There appears to be further discussion. Ms. McGrath.
Is this microphone on? Yes, it is. Something was mentioned that really bothers me. We talk about the college presidents and the chancellor fundraising. That isn't why we hire them. We have a foundation that supposedly is raising funds for us. I would really like our educators to concentrate on education, and I think it's extra pressure that they don't need, that they weren't trained for, that they shouldn't have to devote their time for. I can see if you have a donor that would like to meet with the president before they give the donation, that's just fine. But I don't think it should be one of the duties of the heads of departments, the heads of the schools, to be fundraisers. That isn't what they're trained for, that isn't what they're hired for, and I'd really like us to dispose of that idea, that our administrators should have to bear that extra burden. It's difficult enough doing the job that you all do without having pressures put on you that weren't in the contract that you signed. Thank you.
If there is no further discussion, there is a gentleman. Sir, if you would approach. Yes, sir. We haven't adjourned yet. We almost adjourned. May I have the yellow paper, please? Thank you, Mr. Winter. I hope I'm pronouncing this correctly. Mr. Don Habro. I can't quite tell. That's why I can't. That's why I can't tell you. But, sir, could you spell your last name?
Harbaker. H-A-B-E-C-K-E-R.
Thank you. Mr. Harbaker.
I appreciate you guys coming out here today. This is your college. This is our college. I've been here since 1957. This is my college. This college has given a lot to me. To me, my family, and the community.
She's serious.
And this really doesn't work very well, does it?
She's serious. You got to be very close.
I'm going to be, right, I'm going to be a rock star here.
Yes, you are.
This college has given so much, and I wanted to talk about five elephants that are in the room. I've heard lots of talk tonight that's been wonderful and very political and very correct, and I'm probably not that. I wanted to talk about an elephant called personnel adjustments, redeployment of staff, reduction in force, and voluntary separation options. I don't know about anybody else, but that's what's on my mind. I've only been at this college for five years. It's given a lot to me. I have asked before if I could give something back, as much as 20 percent of my wages. If we're in a budget crunch, 20 percent of my money would help this college that's given so much to me. I would present that as an option. I don't know if it makes a difference to you, but it would make a difference to me. And those are the elephants in the room.
Thank you, Mr. Harbaker. We--
Mr. Harbaker, would you repeat those, please? I only got two of them written down.
Which ones did you get?
I got personnel adjustment and voluntary separation.
Ouch. Redeployment of staff. And reductions in force.
You said five. What's the fifth one?
Transformational change.
Thank you, Mr. Harbaker.
Thank you.
Let me reiterate one item before we go forward, and that is that this resolution, as it stands and as it is before, will almost certainly be amended. I know Mr. Sar has proposed amendments. A member-elect Thor, who will join us in January, has also proposed changes. So there will be changes, and some of those will go into, will certainly go in the direction of Mr. Harbaker's mention. I just wanted to let you know that. If there's no-- Yes, sir. Ms. Heep.
It's on? Okay. Mr. Harbaker, thank you. You revitalized me. I really appreciate what you said. I want to, but then again, I want to go back to Chuck Montgomery. I can speak here, sit here and speak that I've been here generations on generations or decades and decades, and I've been in the education system for, well, now almost 50 years. So the moral of the story is, 50 years ago, the chancellors asked for help every year. And sometimes they asked for it and they didn't need, they didn't ask for it, and sometimes they asked for it. But at all times, the departments had an envelope with ideas and also means of giving back to the college and to the taxpayers. And that has always been my tradition, is in business. And I spent my years in business, going from college to college and state to state and business to business, and that we always gave back sometime, but we always got more because we increased technology, we increased the ability to be able to communicate with our customers. We did what needed to be done, and we grew. And in the business, as we sit here, I'm looking over the great educators we have sitting in this room. The corporations gave back, gave the community college the ability to train their work group. IBM, 3M, General Motors, Ford, Chrysler, they all released their training programs to the community colleges. And I want to sit here and say thank you for your efforts for keeping the workforce going in the community. But at the same time, I want to say thank you for being able to hear your needs and wants, and I cheer you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heep. Our final person is Christina Bulliard. Ms. Bulliard.
Thank you, President Gutierrez, members of the board, and Chancellor Harper-Marinick. My name is Christina Bulliard, and I promised my family I wouldn't say anything tonight, but I just couldn't. I too appreciate the board. I am a product of Maricopa Community College. I continue my education and my skill set at Maricopa Community College, and my family has all been employed and is still employed throughout the district. Unfortunately, I was the only one who came tonight because many of the members of my family are faculty or are MNO staff, and they said, what's on this paper doesn't matter, the decision's made. Being in a student services support role, I too am very concerned with those same five things. I think when I ask around in my department and my division, what are you guys going to the meeting tonight to hear? And it was, what does this mean, redeployment of staff? What does this mean, voluntary separation? We know what the words defined mean, but what does that mean to us and what does that mean to the service that we provide to students? I greatly appreciate the reorganization, and in my department, I'm seen as a necessary evil to kind of protect some assets of the college, and I understand that. But when I'm purchasing my own supplies because I'm told by departments that we don't have the funds, but if we don't have those items, the result is a lawsuit, it's very discouraging. And to hear that now we have to be concerned every day of what this redeployment of personnel or, and not hear a definition of that, I think that's what I came here tonight to hear, was what that definition looked like. I have the utmost respect for you, chancellor. I really do, and I really support your vision and had an opportunity and was recruited from another college to go to their district outside of Maricopa County, and I turned it down for some opportunities. I've been at three different colleges within our district as an employee. I've been faculty. I've been a support staff. Now I'm in management, and I really do respect the college and the college system. I just wish that I didn't have the concern of what this means for my employment and the status of my job.
Ms. Bulliard, thank you very, very much. One more. Thank you, sir. I hope I pronounced this correctly, correctly, Mr. John Keksitz.
K-plitz. Close enough. I just decided to come up here because I couldn't let Donnie hog all the glory. I've been an employee at Glendale College for about 16 years, and I'm just here representing myself tonight. There is no Jim Reed for the staff of Glendale Community College or any of the other colleges of local campus representative to come forward and speak to you tonight. Those individuals don't exist anymore. They've been done away with. It's nice to hear that there's an attitude of cooperation, of working with the employees of Maricopa College in designing and implementing these new changes. I haven't heard anyone talk about the staff and how they're involved and how they will be involved in designing and implementing these changes. And so I just came here to speak to you briefly tonight and tell you that as a person that's been working for the college for a long time and is starting to feel a little disenfranchised by all the things that are happening in a vacuum in a building in Tempe, I really, really do hope that you seriously talk to the rank-and-file staff of the colleges, that you involve them in the process, and hear what they have to say, and use the information that they've got from their careers, working for the district, when you actually get around to sitting down and making these changes. And that was the only comment I had. Thank you.
Great comment. Thank you very much, sir. If there are no further yellow sheets to be waved in the air, and I'm looking around from one end of the room to the other, ladies and gentlemen, this meeting stands adjourned.